So, Council, anything on -- questions on agenda or I haven't seen any consent? Issues, questions, clarity needed? Any Councilor concerns about any other topics? I'm a little concerned, but less so than I was a few days ago that they're actually going to get the paving done before the rain. All right, let's jump right in then if there's nothing further there from Council into our work session items, starting with the E1 goal, possible E1. Good evening, Mr. Charles.
Hey, the green light's on, okay, we're good. For the record, my name is Dan Carlson, I serve as a city's building official. It's good to be with you tonight. Got a couple of items on the agenda. The first one is Council Goal E1, electric vehicle charging stations. And I do have a prezi here for you, actually, it should be queued up, look at that. I love it when technology works. Okay. Okay, so this goal was essentially where that you wanted to have staff do some research and explore new residential codes to accommodate electric vehicle charging stations in homes. So what does that look like when we talk about what is an EV-ready home? So, the photo that I have here is actually a garage that shows, it's at its rough installation phase. You can see the electrical panel on the right-hand side. This is not an EV-ready home, but just to kind of give you some context as to what it would look like, we have our main electric panel. To be an EV-ready home, you would need space for a two-pole breaker in the panel. That would range from anywhere from a 40-amp breaker up to, depending on what kind of a car you have or charger, it could be upwards of 80 amps. So your typical 200-amp panel could have some space issues, you have to watch for that. Then you would have your conduit to an outlet box for a future charging station. And there's some pretty cool technology now where some of those are even, the actual chargers are wireless and they sit on top of the concrete floor and you drive over them. They still require an outlet box and a conduit, that's pretty cool. Just to give you a sense what different types of chargers there are, there's a level 1, 2, and 3. Typical house charger would be a level 2, 240 volts, and that's what we'd be looking for. Some of those that have a hybrid car, like a Ford Fusion, would be looking at a level 1, that would work just fine, but they could use a level 2 as well. It's pretty rare, if ever, to have a level 3 in a house. That's your supercharger for like a Tesla charging station that you would see.
So houses have 240 volt most, all cases, already for your stove, your furnace, maybe?
Correct.
Dryer?
So what's driving this is really we have this, our Governor's Executive Order, 1720, included in with your packet if you're curious. It's lengthy, so I'm not going to go into that. But we essentially have a statewide EV-ready mandate that's coming from the State Building Codes Division. And I have a very short video clip here that really kind of summarizes all of this. This video clip is Mark Long, the Building Codes Division Administrator. He's in charge of signing off on all of the building codes in the state of Oregon. And he's giving an update to the Oregon Construction Industry Energy Board. It's made up of primarily energy proponents, industry, and some building officials, code officials. This is April 23rd, 2019, it's pretty short, and really, I think, does a good job.
... will be done. Similar, we're on track to have a new residential code, both on the building side as well as the energy side, for 2020. The last code, which seems like we were only working on it last week, was actually done in 2017. And so it's time to go through all of that again. And so our thinking was, October 1, 2020 would be the natural date for the residential code. If we're going to get all this commercial energy stuff kind of ironed out, let's get the residential energy stuff ironed out and come up with an Oregon zero-code system, both for commercial and residential, that satisfies the Governor's Executive Order and includes those EV and PV kind of pre-wire availability components that we've discussed in the past, and get all that work done between now and October 1.
Okay, so that, the full length of that video is an hour and eight minutes long. If you're curious, you can go onto the state website and watch that, trying to spare you some of that excitement. And essentially what Mark is getting at is we are going to have a statewide mandate come October of next year. And so as we look ahead here and consider what are our options, you know, in my mind, we have an option of either waiting or moving forward with a local, researching further what local code language might look like. My recommendation, staff recommendation, would be that we wait until statewide adoption. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Council, Councilor Lindvile.
So I understand the connection to the electrical panel. What happens when the electrical panel is not in the garage?
So that's a good question. And there are houses that oftentimes have sub panels as well. When it's not in a garage, you would, to make it EV-ready, you would basically run a conduit and a junction box from wherever it's located within the house to the garage location. Some that I have heard of will even have, you know, people may not have a garage, so they'll run it to the outside of the building, at least it'll get built in place. But that is one of our challenges, is deciding, you know, what are the standards to be electric vehicle ready? And there's a variety of different installation options and challenges with that.
So it would appear that consistency across jurisdictions is one of the questions that the Governor's mandate is going to require to happen, whereas if we move forward individually, we would not, if I understand correctly, have access in the same way to what everybody else is eventually moving toward, right? Okay. Councilor West.
Have we heard from builders and developers about their thoughts on implementing this or any challenges around implementing this? I think it meets our values that we've consistently talked about as a council about being focused on green issues. And I think that that's great, but how are we hearing from the business side of it about practically trying to get it enrolled, and what would they, how can we partner with them and have we started to already, so it gets a smooth rollout and we're on the same page?
You know, that's a good question. I've only reached out to the Home Builders Association Representative, Roseanne Nelson. And she, she actually reached out to a contractor in the Portland metro area on my behalf, and we never heard back from him. So I know that they are doing this as a matter of practice if a customer wants it, but right now it's driven by the market and not some sort of a mandate from local government, so...
Councilor Lindvile.
I understand if we were to go ahead prematurely, prior to the implementation date of the Governor's, the code changes statewide, that we would have to go through a procedure with public hearings and get the information that Councilor West was talking about in terms of what the economic impact was, would be to builders.
That's correct.
And I'm just wondering if that wouldn't, timeline wouldn't preclude us accomplishing all of that before the code was revised?
Yeah, that's my sense as well. We'd be pretty darn close by the time we get there.
Any other questions? Okay, I did read the Governor's, what you call it, Executive Order, and it is far more comprehensive than just electric vehicle preparation. There's a whole bunch of stuff in there which I think will generate discussion around the whole bunch of things, you know, talking about buildings, energy efficiency, and talking about incentive programs through Energy Trust, and talking about a lot of different venues in which it anticipates moving toward increased energy efficiency. So I would guess we may well hear along multiple of these different threads before we're done. But it does seem like this embraces pretty strongly the idea that Council came up with in goal-setting about trying to move toward electric vehicle preparation in housing that's getting built, in Wilsonville anyway, not requiring retrofit, but as houses are built. How would we, how would staff need us to agree or to, you know, what, since it's a formal goal of Council, Ms. Draw, what would you want from Council?
I think you've already kind of given us that direction tonight. If that's the direction that, from the rest of the Council, is that you want to wait to see what occurs at the state level in terms of their adoption of these, of these changes, then we'll just note that in your Council Goals, so you'll see that when you see updates to your Council Goals, that this is an item that we're waiting to see how the state proceeds with. One of the things we could do is have Dan come back at certain milestones in this process and give the Council an update on where the state's at and kind of where, what issues they're struggling with or wrestling with, if that's something that's interest to the Council.
And there may be a public process around those adoptions that might offer us an opportunity to weigh in also.
I think some of the issues you mentioned already, several of you mentioned tonight, are things that the state's going to wrestle with and have conversations about, and some of those challenges in terms of implementing this statewide and what that looks like. So we can certainly come back and give Council updates and get your thoughts and input on it too.
Okay, we good with that? Councilor Lindvile?
I just wanted to clarify, because we've had three or four different electric vehicle charging things in our house. And my understanding is this is requiring the electrical service for that, but not the actual unit, because most cars come with, every time we get a new electrical car, because if you have a lease, you every two years you get a new one, a different one. And they're, frequently they've got an updated thing that gives you a charger thing with the readouts and all that. So this doesn't include that business.
Correct.
It's just the wire.
It's the panel, potential upsizing of the panel, the conduit and a junction box and the wire to go to it.
That you could go into it, yeah. So it'd be more like having a dryer, I mean, a dryer plug-in, but no dryer. You know, I mean, in other words, there's a, there's a thing that you have to have for the car.
Right.
So the relatively cheap part is, at the time of construction, is getting the wire there from the box. Whereas with us, our panel was in the basement, the initial cost to run the conduit out to the garage was an expense that you're trying to have homeowners avoid in the future. But it doesn't, it doesn't mean you're completely ready to plug a car in.
Right.
You would have to install that yourself.
So right now, your dryer plugs are pretty uniform, either a three-wire or a four-wire, whereas your car plugs are still some very...
They're all different.
Councilor West?
Just like, side thought, Lee Han, Council Lee Han triggered my, my mind on is, I hope that they get it on the right side of the garage, because there's a plug-in on one side of the car, we have a plug-in. So it's like, I'm like, I hope practically, I'm like, you know, when we get down to it, like, how you can even plug your car and hope it's on the right side?
Yeah, we've had them on both sides, we had to move it to the other side, but, for the current car. So I don't know how you predict that. It would be nice if they would standardize with car, vehicles that...
Or if they have an induction that you park on top of, then you avoid that whole problem.
They can be in the back tail, they can be on one side or the other.
No, that, most of them do have a long enough cord that it will reach to the other side, but then you've got a big giant cord running across your, so, so anyway, it'd be nice if they would standardize that for our people.
All right. Councilor Ackable?
Just as, I think I agree, it sounds good to let some of these details be hacked out in a different arena. But I think, you know, in, in vain of wanting to support this, as we continue to kind of get updates or where things are, also if there is thoughts from staff on how we can best support builders, once it does go into implementation, you know, if there's things that we can do, process that needs to change, you know what I mean, so that once, because I'm sure there will be some growing pains initially when, when it does all roll out, if there's things that we can do to assist in that way, to help it go smoother, so it can be a positive experience in our community.
Absolutely. One of our challenges is quite honestly, we do not have the electrical program here in Wilsonville, so we don't issue electrical permits, that's done by the county. So one of the things that we can do though, is make sure that we're doing our best to facilitate these installations by having, you know, communications with the county. And we do that now on all kinds of other projects.
Yeah.
I would anticipate will continue.
Okay, great.
All right, so if we could move along, Mr. Carlson, I think your topic is the following one also, talking about fire safety during construction, especially of larger buildings, right?
Yes. So I want to introduce somebody and ask him to come forward. This is Steve Forster, many of you know him or have met him. He is the 12th and Valley Fire Marshal for our area and...
I'm going to ask him to push the button on his mic there, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, at Council and staff, glad to be here.
So I asked Steve to join us just in case, I don't know what kind of questions you're going to have, or where this conversation will go, but we really want it to be available and open with you and try to answer whatever questions you have. So this, this topic came to me as a request, a phone call from, from Mr. Cosgrove, and it was simply, what can we do to prevent a future occurrence of the Villabon fire that we had? And so I've been thinking quite a lot about that. I drafted the staff report to sort of try to explain where we're at statewide and what some of our options are. But for purposes of this presentation, I really want to focus on what is a tall wood building and sort of get at some of what are the fire safety features that we currently have in place, or the Villabon fire didn't have. So tall wood buildings in the building code arena, if I put my building code hat on, that's something that looks like a four-story structure, and there are requirements that hit when you hit 40 feet in height. So just to kind of show you what some of those look like, some of our typical fire safety features on that four-story building would be focused on access and water supply. That's really where the fire department focuses and comes into play. Fire extinguishers and a fire prevention plan. So access and water supply, basically you have to have an access road so that you can have your emergency vehicles show up before you can start combustible construction, meaning wood construction. You have to have your fire hydrants in place, and those are required before combustible construction. And that's regardless of whether you're a tall wood building or not, that's any combustible construction, like even in a subdivision. You're required to have a stand pipe whenever your construction reaches 40 feet in height. So for example, we have, I have a couple of projects I'm showing you here, one is the Hilton just down the road, that's now at its height. And this is a fire hydrant that is outside of the Hilton, it's got a charged hose to it. This is another hydrant that is at the corner, would be the northwest corner of the building. And right behind it, if I can zoom in here, you'll see this riser stand pipe, that is a fire department connection and a fire department, that is called a stand pipe. That is something, again, that's required when you hit 40 feet. That goes into the building and comes up through the concrete floor, through a sleeve, and then this pipe goes basically up through each stairway and is available for firefighters to access in the event of an emergency. So what you would do, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, on the operations side, fire department would show up, connect a hose either from their truck or from this hydrant, charge the stand pipe, then this pipe then becomes fully charged with water, fire department can, can manually take hoses up the stairways and then begin to attack the fire. Is that accurate?
You have a job when you want to start.
Okay, I like my job, thank you. So that is a fire safety feature that does get built into place whenever the building, you know, hits the 40 feet in height, and then we're looking to impose this requirement with the next deck, when that next deck is actually installed. The next thing that we have going for us is we have fire extinguishers, they're located at each floor and at each stairway. In the case of the Hilton, you can, these are three separate photos, we have the fire extinguisher here that's going down the hallway, fire extinguisher here as we're accessing the stairway, and of course, the main office. And there's a lot more extinguishers out there. These are just some, some highlights. And then we have a fire prevention plan. So this is where housekeeping comes into play and security fencing, if, if it's to be installed at all. So fire prevention plan, essentially what we're looking at in this case of the Hilton, you can see we have this security fencing that is, this is their actual entrance, their security fencing goes clear around the site, and this is what that looks like. In the case of the Sienna Building 2 condo, this is a photo that I took, I'm going to say roughly three weeks before the fire, I happened to be putting a presentation together for the Citizens Academy, and this is one of our current projects. You can see there is no construction fencing and the doorways are wide open. You can also see, this is looking into the alleyway, no fencing whatsoever, and door, garage door openings, which allows free access right into the buildings. And the garages are also opening, open. So it's kind of the tale of two, two construction sites. Here you have a contractor who is, in my opinion, quite experienced in the realm of commercial construction. I can't really speak to the experience of Polygon Homes in this realm, but I, I do not know why construction fencing was not around this site. It's kind of a mystery to me. In moving forward, I can tell you, I've had conversations with the Director of Polygon Construction here in Wilsonville. This site will receive construction fencing, it actually already has it, they're going to be tidying that up and substantially securing it. In addition, they will be installing four posts in strategic locations with security cameras mounted on top of those, and that site will be monitored 24/7 by an off-site company who's being hired to do that work. Yes, go ahead.
So is that, you know, on future, ongoing plans for this site in particular, or for any building that they build that would be comparable, I guess? Is it like new plan of business, or is it just specifically for this site?
It is specifically for this site, to answer your specific question.
Yeah.
I have heard that the driver behind this is their insurance. And so it's not a stretch of my imagination to imagine that it will be a requirement going forward. I can't guarantee that, though.
May I ask a question?
Councilor Lindvile?
If you could go back to the previous slide and zero in on that, the Sienna photograph up there.
Councilor, are we getting you on the mic? Because I can hardly hear you here.
Can you hardly hear me? I'm sorry.
That's better, thank you.
So down by what appears to be the cable box, is that the stand, the dry stand pipe there? Is that your impression?
This is a fire department connection, I do not know if that was actually hooked up or not, but that's, that is the intent.
So I guess my question was, do we know that that procedure was followed, was there hydrants adjacent to that construction that would connect to...
There were hydrants in the vicinity, and they could have been connected to this, to this fire department connection. I'll let Steve perhaps speak a little bit to the challenges of the nature of this particular fire and actually using a stand pipe within a stairway.
Yeah, so in, I don't have the report in front of me, I don't remember all the details, but I'm fairly confident in this case, so when we arrived, it was a fully involved structure, and we would not have used a stand pipe in that case. So typically where we'd use a stand pipe is where it's a smaller interior, like what we call a room and contents type fire. And so again, that allows us, instead of having to run hose all the way from, you know, a fire engine that's parked outside and try and weave that hose up through stairwells and potentially through doors, et cetera, allows us to take a hose pack inside and simply connect at the top of the stairs on the fourth floor. But we would use that in a smaller fire, I'm pretty confident that that was not used in this case, just because of the magnitude of this, of the fire at the time when even the first crew, crews arrived.
Councilor West?
Is anybody, do you know Polygon, I know we've talked about live security guards, has been a constant theme from the Council. Does the Hilton use any additional security besides fencing, and has there been any, buddy saying it's just the right thing to do, we're going to start using security guards and be driven by just doing the right thing?
I asked the Hilton that specific question, if they had security guards in play, and they, their response to me was they felt the site was visible enough, and with the substantial fencing around it, that security guards were not warranted in that case. Mainly they're trying, not necessarily focused on fire, they're focused on preventing theft.
Have we seen any other jurisdictions or local governments mandate certain type of, is there model of certain type of security requirements in one of buildings in a vulnerable state, that's maybe what's best for the community as a whole and maybe not what the builders themselves would desire to do?
The only policy that I have seen is with the city of Portland. And it has some very robust requirements in it, in my opinion. And the, the challenge with that is that it's a local policy, and they are a very dense community, you know, it's, they're much more dense than, than we are. So in a lot of respects, what their challenges are are different than ours, and it makes a lot more sense. I don't know if you would concur with that, but...
So Villabon for suburban communities is pretty dense. And do we know if they've had any positive outcomes in the reduction of crime or criminal behavior on properties in a vulnerable state with their more stringent requirements? Do we know if that has reduced criminal activity and has worked in that area, has been effective?
Sure. I do not know that, to answer your question directly. I can tell you that Steve and I are both serving on Governor's Fire Service Policy Council on a task force with Representative Neuron, and we are currently talking about that policy and perhaps others that may be out there. We've only had one meeting, there are more to come, and so that could be information that is forthcoming yet, but I don't know the answer to your question.
Councilor Lee Han?
Two questions. The 24/7 security cameras, are those monitored or just recording? So if something happens, someone would be notified?
Yes, and I asked that specific question.
Okay. And the second one is, you mentioned housekeeping, but I didn't say too much about housekeeping with regards to, the other source of ignition is frequently construction activity itself. So if there are welders or other, other hot activities going on, is there, are there housekeeping rules relative to, to that, activities of that nature, or does housekeeping cover that? Or is it, or there's, maybe there's some other... Or is it, or there's, maybe there's some other category that falls under?
Yeah, we do, we do discuss that in the, in the staff report. I am on page 21, top of page where we talk about precautions against fire. And there's quite a laundry list here, including, you know, smoking, open burning, waste disposal, you know, what do they do, for example, with these giant salamander heaters that they bring in to dry?
To dry sheep and stuff.
So there's definitely some thought given to that, and that is to be built into their fire prevention plan.
So they have a standardized protocol? And then individual contractors, subcontractors are responsible for being aware of those rules on, housekeeping rules, one of those items?
Other questions? We keep going? Okay?
If you've got other.
We're just about done.
He'd answered some of them already.
Okay, so these are the, so we're dealing with the state adopted building code. That was adopted October 1st, just a week ago. And the Oregon Fire Code, I believe that'll be updated here in the next month, perhaps two. But what I wanted to show you was a specific exclusion out of the state adopted building code specifically, and this is new. It specifically says that, or calls out, fire safety during construction as not being something that is regulated under the state building code. So I think that's important because, you know, if we're trying to look at what do we do moving forward, we have to do something locally if, if we're going to do something. Or look at what is coming out of this task force that Steve and I are, you know, working on with Representative Neuron. And perhaps there's a statewide fix for this, because it certainly has the attention of a lot of folks, a lot of individuals.
Counselor Akval?
I saw that in the packet, the mention of the task force as well. And I was wondering, those, there wasn't, or maybe, we don't know yet, but a projection of like a timeline for that task force? The, the goals of, you know, in X many months, we will arrive at, you know, whatever the possible solution or proposition might be. Do you have that information?
I could probably speak to it a little.
Or is it just kind of exploring right now?
Yeah, so typically, typically the way it works, it's a, it's a task force for the Governor's, Governor's Fire Service Policy Council. And generally speaking, that task force, sort of the deliverable would be a set of recommendations back to the Governor's Fire Service Policy Council. Typically, that would be in the form of, generally, it's not just one recommendation. Typically, we would have several different recommendations. And the timeline then will vary greatly depending on the particular recommendation. So I anticipate that probably at least one or more recommendations will come out with code adoption or code amendment recommendations. Those can be done mid-cycle, so they don't have to wait until the next full adoption, which will probably be three or four years. But those are generally, that's probably a year in the process from the time recommendation is made and proposal is developed. Other recommendations may be legislative. And as you know, legislative, there's no guarantee of whether they would pass through the legislature or the time in which it would take to do that. But we do have Representative Neuron, who's been a strong supporter on this issue. She's sitting on the task force and has, you know, certainly committed to supporting and certainly looking at helping with any legislative recommendations. So I guess the short answer is, probably the best case scenario is probably at least 12 months for something to come to fruition. Realistically, it could even be a little bit longer than that.
And that is to implement the recommendations? How long until we see the list of recommendations come from the task force?
I don't know if there's a firm deadline on the task force, but generally, they try, we try to move relatively quickly. Our next meeting is actually next, next week, I believe. So I think we'll have recommendations out of the group, probably within a month or two, is what I would guess.
But then the process to actually implement or work those through the system could be quite long.
Could be quite long. And, you know, and keep in mind, some things, like we briefly talked about fencing, you know, if you were to mandate fencing on all wood structures in the state of Oregon, four stories or more, I mean, you literally, you would, there's not enough fencing in the state to do that. So I mean, you would have to think through the logistics, for example, of how you actually do some of these things, and let alone the cost and impact and that sort of thing, so...
So I'm mindful of time.
Yeah, we need to move on.
So some other regulatory influences that I have heard directly from contractors is their own company's safety policies mandate that they have things like security fencing. And insurance, we've talked about that. And then OSHA. While I don't know what the OSHA requirements are, I have heard that there are OSHA requirements for some preventative measures. So options in, in moving forward, you know, we can always rely on the contractor's best management practice. We are seeing some change in behavior, particularly with Polygon. Honestly, almost every single commercial construction site that is of this size and magnitude, it almost always has the fence around it. In fact, I can't even think of an example where you didn't, other than the fire that we had. So the other option is you could provide direction for a local building code amendment. That would be challenging, but we could, we could see about pursuing that. We could modify the Wilsonville Development Code and establish a land use condition of approval. That also has its, its challenges. And I don't want to disregard the, what we are doing already, and that is, we're reaching out to contractors in the pre-development meetings. We have a handout, I've included that in the, in the staff report. And when our staff are on site, we try to be extra vigilant about making sure that when we see housekeeping issues, while we can't really enforce it, we can at least bring it up and have a conversation with people. Same thing with the construction fencing.
All right, so we'll have to have some other thoughts and discussion maybe at a future time, if counsel feels strongly one way or the other. It looks to me like the frequency with which Wilsonville would experience a 40-foot tall structure, wood structure, would be relatively infrequent. And, and a code requirement or a condition of approval requirement would come into play correspondingly infrequent. That doesn't sound complicated from my side of the table. Maybe it's more complicated in the doing.
I'd say it's at least once a year, though. Couple times a year. What, you think, two or three times a year?
Well, we, we get a lot of three-story structures.
Yeah, jury trail would have been a lot.
We don't get a lot of four-story. So that's kind of the tipping point there.
So we're going to need to keep moving on here, and that's why I say we may need to have some further conversation about what the council's sort of bent is. We might need to bend your ear again at some point.
Happy to do so.
I have a couple, I'll keep you offline, I have a couple more questions, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move then to the PERS contribution rate discussion. Mr. Catco, there's, there he is. Good evening.
Good evening.
Heat up your mic there.
Kathy Rodaker, the Finance Director.
Keith Catco, the Assistant Finance Director.
And it's pretty exciting news that we get to bring forward today. It's not often that finance gets to do this kind of thing, but we have a great opportunity for investment on the future costs of our PERS. The employer incentive fund has been around, an idea around for a while. It started out where the state was going to allow each jurisdiction to put into a site account up to $1 million, and then they would match that with a 25% match. However, when it went through the legislation this last session, they were actually able to come up with a funding source, and has put $100 million aside to create the funds available that the state can then use to match what we're putting in. So they changed it, and are now are allowing the cities and school districts to put up to 25% into a fund. 20% of that would be our money, and 5% would be that of the state. And 20% of the city's unfunded actuarial liability, which is currently $7.5 million, equates to about $3.4 million. And staff is recommending that we do the full 3.4 million, and it works out to be about an $850,000, uh, $850,000 match from the state. So Keith is our expert in calculating all this stuff out, so I'll let him give you the details on the return on investment and other benefits of the program.
So the, yeah, there's a lot of big numbers floating around, and we wrote a pretty detailed staff report, so I'll try not to go down to that level of detail, but I'm just going to kind of emphasize the value of the program and articulate some of the mechanics of it, and then we'll just kind of open it up, and you can ask me questions as they, as they come to mind, I guess. Obviously, it's pretty hard to find an investment mechanism that's going to give you 25% return upfront like that. The legislative initiative is really based on driving employers to take near-term actions to reduce their UAL, which is the unfunded actuarial liability. And so their future, our future PERS expenses will be lower. Basically, we've been told, and you've probably heard about this, to brace for 15 to 20 more years of rising pension bills. So this is a initiative by the legislature to mitigate that a bit. So the deposit the city will make, 3.4 million, or potentially will make, and that is the dollar limit that the state will match up to the 25%. So if we put in 3.4 million, the state will kick in 856,000. And that will create what is called a site account, which becomes an asset of the PERS trust, but will provide a rate relief only for the city's UAL. And the site account, along with the earnings along the way, which is amortized over the 20-year life of the unfunded actuarial liability, and the rate, and the rate reduction will be recalculated every biennium for 20 years. So kind of leave it there. If you have questions, or I can go on, have a little bit more. We could talk about the unfunded actuarial liability, what Kathy mentioned. The city's unfunded actuarial liability is $17 million, and that's present value estimated or determined as of December 31st, 2017. That's the numbers, they're going off for this. The state's unfunded actuarial liability is $22.3 billion. So we're in the state pool, so we kind of share the unfunded actuarial liability, but the city's portion, which they have determined is $17 million.
So $100 million that they have to work with, is there a first come, first serve? Are we in danger of being left out? Is there, everybody going to be scrambling to be first in? You know, how's that going to work?
Right. They vote, oh, sorry.
And there's a table in your report that employers approve for EIF, and I don't see us on that.
No, we haven't applied yet.
And, and so does that put us behind the eight, I mean, how, where are we at?
The applications were first open to cities, counties, and government agencies that have a UAL greater than 200% of their current annual payroll, which is a little bit of an arbitrary benchmark, but they had to choose something. So ours is below 200%, so we can't apply yet until December 2nd, I believe, is when it opens up for those employers. So we're a little bit better than some employers, so the program has been open, and that's why you saw, we provided that list of employers who have applied already.
And those would be the ones that are in worse shape than we are, I mean, essentially?
Yes. And as of Friday, we did receive an update, only $14.6 million has been...
Of the 100?
Yeah.
All right, so that would sound like there's some capacity still there, but there may be a rush come December 2.
Yeah, when you open it up to everyone. And, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot of the cities that are in that predicament don't have the reserves that we have, so a lot of...
To be able to make the payment.
We're not even able to take advantage of the situation, so...
Counselor West?
I know one of my big concerns is hoping and praying that the state legislature and the governor will take action on helping local municipalities deal with the blooming and looming PERS costs in the future that will really impact our ability to provide essential services that cities need to provide to citizens, that will affect like our children in a really negative route they may not see as vibrant Wilsonville in the future as they do today. Can you kind of explain to me, because the thing that I like when I hear this, as somebody who has publicly been critical of PERS and how it's been handled, is helping to soften that really, that blow that we're going to face? And not being a finance expert, can you help me understand how, if we make this large upfront investment as is being shared with us here, that how does that really help in the future, like offset that cost? And like, what is that going to look like practically in the future for the citizens of Wilsonville?
Well...
And you might want to look at the table on page 41 of 175 in your packet, which diagrams out some of that question.
Yeah, and we, PERS have provided, has provided a rate model where they're projecting the rates for the next 20 years for the city, or for every city, really. 20 years will go by in a blink of an eye, but they don't really expect, like I said, the, the PERS rates are increasing regardless. There, there's nothing legislatively that has, basically, we, they, we have to wait till the actuarial tables of life expectancies have filtered through the system. I think through legal rulings and stuff, they can't go back and change some of those early promises. So we looked at that rate model, and we did some, we did the cash flow analysis, because they amortize this, this $3.4 million deposit we're making. They're going to amortize that over the unfunded actuarial liability, which is, which is like 20-year actuarial endeavor. And just looking at those cash flows, we calculated that the, what you can use in finance terms sometimes to, to look at an investment is the internal rate of return. And over those 20 years, it is going to provide roughly about somewhere between 8 and 9% internal rate of return for this $3.4 million. So we couldn't even, we can't find that rate of return for any investment we're making right today. So the, the liability isn't going away necessarily, so if you conceptualize this as a bit of an investment, it'll produce it right around that 8 to 9% over those 25 years, 20 to 25 years. So that might be one way to think about it. You know, the city, it has to be more handled legislatively at the state to fix some of those issues that you talk about, as well as, you know, just letting people filter through the system, and 20 years from now, we'll be in better shape.
Okay. So we're getting tight, but what is staff going to be looking for from council on what timeline?
Well, we have included the full amount in this evening's supplemental budget adjustment so that we do have the budget authority to move forward. Of course, if that's...
But we haven't, haven't, we don't have a resolution to do so tonight, do we?
It is part of the, of the supplemental budget adjustment through the public hearing.
So actually, the authorization, not only to budget it, but to actually do it, is contained therein?
Yeah. We contain, we contain that in your, in your supplemental, in part because we, as somebody mentioned earlier, we want to get rolling on this, right? And so we don't want to miss our, miss our opportunities. So we included that in your supplemental, assuming we were going to have this conversation with you all tonight, and if the direction was different, then we could make that modification. But we want to get rolling, which is why we put in the supplemental, because that just happened to be coming tonight, anyway.
Okay, all right. So can we, if we have other questions, can we do that in the meeting tonight? Or do we have other questions we need right now? Counselor Lindvile, question you need?
Well, I just have, I'm looking at the distribution of where the city expenses, where this is going to be expensed. And it looks like the greatest percentage is out of the general fund, but there are some out of operating budgets. And so I'm assuming that departments have not planned for this reduction in their budgets.
Was talked today, about today in our executive team meeting.
Yeah. I've been in that situation where that's an exciting administrative job. So what I guess I'm wondering is, do you know yet what is... So what I guess I'm wondering is, do you know yet what is, what, are there major negative impacts, you know, operations that will not happen as a result of expensing those funds? I know that you talked about having reserves to be able to get, so I assume that that's where the majority of the money is coming from.
Yes, it is all coming from reserves. The only fund that is a little shaky after this will be our stormwater fund. It's been in a shaky position for the last several years. It was finally starting to build up a little bit, so that could result in having to have most likely an inter-fund loan from the general fund next fiscal year. But we had been discussing that anyway, as their capital projects are always, you know, pushing the envelope as far as their revenues come. You know, obviously, you know, our building fund, that will, it will probably have an impact long-term, but we'll deal with that on, you know, every year when we go through the budget cycle.
Okay.
And it's not like we wouldn't be having impacts long-term as the rates gradually increase.
Correct.
We're just kind of having to face up to it a little earlier.
Correct.
I mean, but the reality is, they would come to us as we progress.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So let's, if, think about questions, we can have a little more discussion in the meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, we're snug on time here, but let's move to the Tiff Zone discussion, if we can do that expeditiously here.
Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager. And I'm up here tonight with Nick Papanouk of Tiberius Solutions, who's one of our urban renewal consultants. And tonight, we're going to talk about our Tiff Zone program and some ideas on how we could redesign it going forward. So a little bit of background, after the global recession in 2008, I believe the city was revising its economic development strategy, and as part of that, the city of Wilsonville was one of the hardest-hit cities in the region with some of the highest vacancies rates with our industrial land. And so out of that came the Tiff Zone program, which was a targeted incentive program aimed at converting vacant warehouses to higher-use, higher-value manufacturing facilities. So it was set up like urban renewal, only that it was site-specific, and it was different than urban renewal in that we weren't issuing debt. So if a user came in and invested enough value into the building and created enough new jobs, they would be eligible for a future rebate on their property taxes. So after the program was adopted, the next year, it was applied to six properties. The following years, half of those properties were leased organically and removed from the program, leaving three remaining properties. And eventually, all of those, all of those leased, we've lost one of the users, Microsoft was one of the only users to actually get close to this level of investments. It was one of the only users to convert a warehouse into higher-use manufacturing, and even still, they weren't close to the $25 million level. Last year, we extended the termination date for the program by one year to keep it open and allow for further evaluation of the program. And then now, we're coming to you recommending that we expire the program as it currently is designed, and we're proposing a redesign and to move a different direction with the program. Initially, the Tiff Zone program applied to six buildings, so the first three have been open, are the ones that are currently open, Pacific Foods, the former Microsoft facility, and Building 83 on the former Xerox site, which is occupied by a battery company. The, like I mentioned, Microsoft is the only user to actually convert the space into a higher-value manufacturing facility. None of the, the program essentially wasn't really effective in the sense that we didn't get the, convert some of these spaces to higher use. We didn't always have the level of job creation and industrial use that we were intending And I think part of that was because of the program criteria. So we had an aspirationally high investment level. We had, we were expecting $25 million in capital improvements or equipment, and 75 new jobs at 150% of county wage. And then if this criteria was met, the property would be eligible for up to a 75% rebate on the future property tax increment.
So what we're talking about going forward is a potential redesign of the program that, at its heart, tries to accomplish the same goal, provides greater flexibility to the city to better meet the needs of potential developers. So a few of the key points we wanted to raise tonight. One is site agnostic zones. So the old program required you to pick six particular properties, hope that you were picking correctly, that those would be ones that would be interesting to developers in the future and might attract the kind of development that you're looking for. The city is proposing for the, staff is proposing for you to let us know. The proposed new program would not cherry-pick sites upfront, but would set in place a framework that would establish the parameters for which a business would qualify for these types of investments. And if a business came in and showed that they were going to have a plan that would qualify for the rebate program, then you would put in place the urban renewal plan to allow that to take place. Not only does that give you better flexibility, but it also reduces your administrative burden. You don't have multiple urban renewal plans that you have to adopt upfront and then continue to maintain and administer for years and deal with the other taxing districts when it's set to expire, and have conversations about whether or not they should be extended. You wait to adopt any of those specific plans until you actually have a developer at the table that shows that they're going to qualify for this development incentive. The second key point on program qualifications overall, the old program was patterned off of the state enterprise zone program. The city of Wilsonville didn't qualify to have an enterprise zone, so this was sort of a way to provide that same type of incentive here. However, it did not have the flexibility to match the needs of other developers that might be interested in the community. What we're looking at here is tailoring those program qualifications to give you additional flexibility while still maintaining the high bar that you want for potential, for potential development.
So what we're talking about there is potentially if you had a developer that came in and was proposing to provide hundreds of jobs at high wages, but they did not have $25 million of capital investment, right now, they wouldn't qualify for anything. Maybe there's a possibility to have some additional flexibility where more jobs can help offset a little bit lower assessed value and vice versa. Similar to that, we're looking at potential for tiers of benefits. So it used to be a one-size-fits-all. Either you met these qualifications and you received 75% rebate for three years. There's potential to make that more flexible. Maybe you don't quite meet the desired qualification, so instead of 75% rebate, you receive a 50% rebate. Maybe this is a home-run project that goes well above and beyond what you were envisioning, and instead of having three years' worth of benefits, there's five years' worth of benefits. So the option to explore greater flexibility in the benefits that are awarded based on the types of projects that come in the door. And then the last point isn't a new part of the program. This is something that's always been there, but just emphasizing that it is a tax rebate program, not a tax abatement program. So there can be worries about developers coming in, receiving public benefits, and then not living up to their end of expectations. With a rebate program, the developer pays their taxes. The city then has the opportunity to confirm that they are delivering on what was promised. And if they deliver on what was promised, then you pay out the rebate to them to help make sure that they're living up to their obligation. Then a timeline on what is being proposed by staff. The first phase essentially ends tonight, so if the city council is interested in this proposed concept, and if there's a consensus on moving forward with it, then we move to the other phases there. Development of program details is all the technical work to evaluate different scoring systems and come up with a specific formula that city staff feels hits the mark in terms of flexibility and ensuring high standards for the developers that would qualify. At that point in time, the phase goes into testing political support. The current proposal calls for two key milestones there with the potential for others. Those two key milestones would be a meeting of the Urban Renewal Advisory Task Force. This is a group of affected stakeholders that have been meeting for, I guess, about the last five years to advise the city on key urban renewal policy issues as needed. And that includes representatives of downtown, other residents of the community, business owners, as well as representatives of the affected taxing districts who forego their tax revenue from the use of urban renewal. And then obviously, in addition to meeting with that group, meeting again with city council so that you have a chance to see all the details of how this will work and what the Urban Renewal Advisory Task Force has come up with. Additional things that you might consider at that point in time would be whether or not you'd like this program to go out for an advisory vote of the public. Lots of your previous urban renewal plans have gone out for advisory votes. This is a little different because there's not a specific plan that you're moving forward with. It's a, it'd be a program, a framework, and later on, you'd be approving individual plans. Still, in 2013, when you did have an advisory vote for the initial Tiff Zones, it passed in a landslide with 78% approval of the public. If whatever combination of political testing you want to do, there is support for this program going forward, then the last piece would be to develop actual urban renewal plan and report templates. So those would be the official documents that you would need to use in order to come back in the future with a developer and adopt an urban renewal plan that would authorize the use of Tiff to do this rebate program. Those can be lengthy, complicated documents to write, so rather than waiting until you have a developer and then going about writing one of those plans and reports, this would set up a fill-in-the-blanks-type template so that when a developer comes in, you can be more nimble in your response and have that report ready to go right away for the city council to, at that point in time, again, take action to officially approve the plan. That is one thing about this program. Even establishing the program now doesn't lock you in place and commit you to anything. For any developer to use the program, it would have to come back to city council for approving an actual plan and report.
Okay, we're out of time, and I'd hope to have some discussion here, and it doesn't look to me like it's going to happen within the timeframe we've got. So I don't know if we talk about it next time, or what do we do, Ms. Droh?
Yeah, I think we could certainly bring it back for the next council meeting. I don't know, I'm kind of looking to Jordan. Is there any rush on us getting this done tonight, or can we come back the next council meeting and have an opportunity for some dialogue?
We come back the next council meeting. So the Tiff Zones expire in November, so we don't have a lot of time if we want to take a different--
If we want to not have them expire.
Yes. But they expire next month, but yeah, we can--
Let's do this. Let's put it on your next council agenda for the next council meeting. That way, we can kind of continue this discussion. You've heard kind of the preview tonight, and then it gives you an opportunity to think about your questions and thoughts and comments that we can do at the next--
There's quite a bit more information about the historical context. I'd like to be sure that the council understands and, you know, thinks about when we get to that, but--
I would agree. We can have that, we can have that prepared and teed up for you.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we've got just a few minutes for our Oregon Legislative Report. I'm sorry, you're last on the agenda, Mr. Otten.
No problem whatsoever. We anticipated that, so we have a quick show. Mark Ottenett, Public Affairs Director for the city, and--
For the record, Greg Leo with the Leo Company, your public affairs counsel.
All right. So we have a brief legislative report to give you on what happened at the legislative session. We're just going to do a few primary highlights.
So the legislature, six-month legislature, started last January, 2,768 bills. We had a direct interest in about 100 bills that we followed. We testified on 24 bills during the session. Much of what's done in Salem is a coordinated effort with various other groups, League of Oregon Cities, Metropolitan Mayors, other groups, folks from the metro area. Everything we do is based on your state legislative agenda, which this body has approved.
Now, we're going to highlight a few specific bills.
Because we're a growing city with lots of residential housing, one of the most important bills was House Bill 2001. This was to provide housing in the middle of the housing market. Essentially affects us through zoning and single-family residential zones. It will have an effect on how we plan for and bring to market additional housing. We were very fortunate to have Miranda, our planning director, come to Salem, work with the speaker's office, and help shape the bill. The bill was imperfect as introduced, and we made some additional changes to the bill through working with it. Is it a perfect bill? No. No bill is really perfect. This one has been improved and one that I'm sure we can live with, and I think in the bottom analysis will provide some additional middle housing.
Another bill of interest was HB 2003 pertaining to housing, regional housing needs analysis. And it did set up different parameters in different parts of the state. For metro-area cities, we will have to complete what's called a housing production strategy every six years. So this is a housing needs analysis coupled with how are we going to go about producing housing to meet the needs.
And there'll be essentially periodic review, you know, at Metro to see how we're doing towards meeting those housing goals. So building permits on substantially completed projects is one that we had some questions about. This would require the city to issue residential building permits once a project is completed to a certain point. So this would go into effect January 1, 2020. This bill did pass, and it will have an impact on our building permit department.
Go ahead. There were two housing property tax exemptions. SB 262 continued a multifamily tax exemption for transit-oriented development, continued it for another 10 years, extended to sunset. House Bill 2164 basically is the property tax exemption for low-income and special populations. The sunset was also extended 10 years to 2030. This is a program that the city has utilized to grant tax abatements to properties in Wilsonville for low-income and special populations.
So really, these are continuations of current programs that have successfully developed housing. Transportation, of course, is our top priority, and, you know, because we're on I-5, the I-5 Wilsonville Facility Plan was and is a continuing priority for us. So we are pleased that we got approval and a budget note on House Bill 5050, which is the major funding bill at the end of the session, to get to a cost-to-complete study on the facility plan. So this would provide for the southbound I-5 auxiliary lane from Wilsonville Road to 551 and to the Charbonneau exit, and would help, you know, facilitate the throughput of traffic across the Boone Bridge.
Under the environment, two bills phasing out single-use plastics were passed. One was single-use plastic checkout bags. This will be a statewide policy with uniform standards for businesses and shoppers. And Senate Bill 90 was a phase-out of single-use plastic straws unless the customer requests that.
So the harmful algae blooms was a major and is a major concern for the city, and we work in coalition with a number of other cities and public agencies. There's a task force that's been formed to address prevention measures for this. Of course, we also want recognition of ozone as a treat, as a approved treatment measure for water. So we, Dolora Kerber has been doing an excellent job serving on this statewide task force. They've been meeting in this very room in City Hall, and they're coming out, we believe, possibly before February with some recommendations to address this question in the long term.
Urban renewal. We just were hearing a bit about urban renewal, and again, urban renewal was before the legislature. This was a compromise bill that requires consultation with other taxing jurisdictions when your urban renewal is used for a public purpose. And public building projects are defined in the legislation. They would include things like a city hall and other specific kind of city facilities. It clarifies that a substantial amendment, if you make a substantial amendment in your urban renewal plans, you may trigger provisions within this bill that include certain levels on maximum indebtedness and consulting with taxing jurisdictions in advance.
So this solves a long-term conflict between cities and special districts over the use of urban renewal, and it was the product of a, kind of a discussion between SDAO and the League and OEDA over the course of the last interim. So it actually solves something which has been a political problem for the city in the past, and frankly, it brings everybody to the table around best practice that the city would do voluntarily on its own. So we felt-- So we felt it was a reasonable compromise. So coming up in the short session, and, you know, the, the crystal ball is only slightly clear here, but I can pretty much say that the climate legislation will be back. It's one of the four top leadership priorities. It's the one that did not pass. Of course, it's the one that got all the headlines with House Bill 2020. But I think it is, you know, safe to predict that climate legislation will be coming back for the 35-day short session, which begins around the 1st of February and goes through the first week in March. Second of all, we have been told by Chair, Co-Chair McEwen that the Connect Oregon Program, which is alternative, funding alternative modes of transportation, is at risk, and that if we want to support that, this is a good time to do it, because this money may be used for other purposes. And finally, waiting for the recommendations of the harmful algae bloom task force, that will most certainly become a legislative proposal. And as we saw tonight, just wanted to, you know, let's say the tall building, the wood tall building program, probably not ready for the short session, but definitely looks like something that could correct the fire code in the long run. And that's kind of a good example of how legislation develops. We have a public problem, people, Oregonians, get around the table, they work out a solution, we take it to legislature, and we get state law changed. So with that, your questions, please.
Counselor West.
So I met with Representative Neuron today, and she talked about House Bill 5050 and how it was classified as a note. And I think instead of like an allocation, am I, am I terms correct?
Perfect.
And we've lost zero on our $3.4 million, and now it's $300,000. And I'm wondering about that impact and how do we get it back to where we can get that comprehensive study done so we could be in line to get the, those federal funds to deal with the situation? And it was a little disheartening when it was getting a lot of yeses, 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 and then the vote, and yay, and here we are with a setback.
The sausage-making is often made in the Ways and Means process. We had an excellent, you know, joint transportation committee hearing. We had, you know, Representative Drazen, Representative Neuron, you know, Senator Thatcher, all strongly supporting. We got a unanimous vote out of the authorizing committee. It went the Ways and Means, it became a budget note. It almost didn't happen at all. We actually had to intervene towards the end of the Ways and Means process. But it's, but it is valuable in that it moves the funding process forward for the facility plan. So even though we did not get a specific amount of money, we did get a commitment that we will have something actionable at the beginning of the next long session.
The legislature seemed to be demonstrating transportation funding fatigue.
Yeah.
None of the state's top priorities were funded. I-205 and the Abernathy Bridge, not funded. Newburgh-Dundee bypass, Phase 2, not funded. So it was, it seemed like HB 2017 and the prior session, the legislature felt like they'd done a lot of their transportation funding lift at that time and did not seem to be in the appetite for more. We do at least have a cost-to-complete study, so we will know by the time of the next full session what this project will actually cost, because so far, we've not been able to get ODOT to actually give a very good cost estimate. We're told between $80 to $200 million.
And we need to continue to beat this drum, to get public support, to get the throughput on the bridge, bridge fixed.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for the short time, but that's helpful, and I'm sure that we'll be talking again.
I look so unreported.
I'm not sure what that is, I'll have to look. So let's call adjournment at 6:59, and we will be downstairs in just a moment.